...Commission Citizen Advisory Committee in the City of Lowell for a regular meeting on Monday, September 12th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to apply of the United States of America and to the required for which stands one nation under God and indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Sue, roll call please.
Commissioner Kay Wilder.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Kadula.
Here.
Commissioner Plank.
Here.
Commissioner Schramman.
Here.
Commissioner Chambers, Jackson, and Chair Barker.
Here. Do I have a motion to excuse Marty?
I like a motion to excuse.
And a second?
I can second.
All in favor, please say aye. Marty's being excused. Do I have approval for the agenda, a motion for approval of the agenda?
I make a motion for approval. Support.
And discussion, Sue?
Commissioner Kay Wilder.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. And do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting from June 27th?
I'll have a motion for that.
Support?
I'll support.
And discussion? Sue?
Commissioner Kay Wilder.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes. Public comments and communication concerning items not on the agenda. Sue, do you have anything? No? Okay. Old business, there is no old business, new business. We have a public hearing for the ProSeal Storage at 1251 Bowes Road. And I would like to open the public hearing before I forget that. And Commissioners, remind me to close later on. And Andy, you want to lead us off and walk us through it, please? Or do you want to have the, let's have the applicant. The applicant could come up in just in, you know, a couple of minutes explaining what you want to do.
My name is Dale from ProSeal Asphalt Maintenance. And basically what I'm looking to do is just have a facility where I can store all my equipment. Alls we want to do is show up, take our equipment, go to work, come back, park our equipment inside and go home. I had my facility over in Grand River for 17 years, but a storage unit facility went in there and just kind of squeezed us out. We're growing business, they're growing business, so it was time to move on. So I feel like I got lucky to find the place that I found in Lowell. There wasn't that much space available. As you know, everything was so expensive, so to buy something at my age was kind of out the window, but found this place and now I'm just looking for approval to be able to operate out of there easily. Like I said, I don't want to run a full blown business. I'm just looking for some storage. Come in, go to work, come back, park things and go home.
Okay, thank you. Please have a seat and we'll ask you questions as we go along if we have to and go from there. And you're on.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you. So this is, the property is located at 1251 Bowes Road, so this is the one that, so there's a baseball field on the south side of it. There's an accessory building on the north side of it. And then we approved, I'm sorry, you've approved David Marijuana Establishment. Do you not recall the name of it off the top of my head, right to the north of that? And this was, you did this a while ago and it's irrelevant to the conversation other than just to help orient you to what property we're talking about. It has an area of about three acres, it's owned C3 general business. And so we've looked at a couple of different applications like this over the years. In the C3 district, we have a land use that's called, I think just like a commercial storage warehouse, basically. So this is, is one of those passive storage uses that kind of fits in with that land use category. And so that's what triggers the special land use process. One thing that's a little bit unique about this application is that typically with a special land use, we require a full blown site plan. We cannot do that here because there's no changes at all being proposed to the site or the property. It's just a building. They're not going to use the baseball field for outdoor storage or something like that. It's all going to be just going inside the building. We're not proposing any changes to the property. So we're strictly, strictly looking at this as, from a land use perspective. And we're only looking at, so it's all about the existing buildings on the lot. So looking at those special land use review standards, we'll just go through those one at a time. And then just, do you want to have the question going on, I'll open at the end?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd say A through F.
A through F, yeah.
Yes, that's true. So the first one is that the proposed special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate appearance with the existing or intended character of the vicinity. This is in a commercial area. It's a commercial use. This is not going to affect the, you know, surroundings because all the activity is going to occur indoors. Item B says that it shall be generally consistent with the PBR master plan. This is in that, that mixed-use future land use category in the plan. So the master plan has two or three different little nodes, I guess, of what it calls future land use. And so how we apply that is sort of different from one place to the other. One of our mixed-use areas is to our east here from City Hall. That mixed-use area, we look for more downtown style development with buildings like we have downtown. In this part of town, it is a commercial corridor, basically, so we apply a different standard there when we're looking to use. And, and the master plan recognized that, it says that it's not intended, you know, we're not looking for things in downtown, downtown style buildings. So there's some flexibility there. The use here will add a little more commercial activity to this mixed-use area. It's not going to contribute to the pedestrian oriented environment that would be compatible with residential and office uses, if those uses aren't proposed or filed inquiry around here either. And I would add that it's not going to be detrimental to that either, since their traffic generation would be very low, parking generation would be very low. This is a very passive use in this instance, so the overall effect is going to be pretty minimal, I think. The third one asks that it'll be served by essential public facilities and services such as highways, streets, police, fire, et cetera. Water and sewer are available here, although again, I don't know that they will need either of those since, again, we're just talking about storage. If they are going to hook up utilities to those, to the building, that's something that would be overseen by the TPW.
Let's just ask that question right now. Do you have any need or are there currently facilities asked the building?
There is, there's water and electric. About the only thing I would do would hook a hose to the inside spigot and let outside spigot and run off that. I'm not going to use the bathroom, the shower. There's currently that down there, but.
Okay, so there's limited water.
Yes.
Electric use currently.
Yes.
So adequately served by those things. Item D asks that it will create excessive additional requirements at public cost for public facilities or services. And we don't think that it will, we're not looking at exceptionally high hard consumption, exceptionally high water use or wastewater generation. So we think that that standard is met. And then the last two, E, the proposed land use shall not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, or equipment that would be detrimental to purchase of property by excessive production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, clutter, or odors. Again, we don't have any concerns there. This is all just due to the passive nature of, of the use here. There's not manufacturing, there's not a bunch of cars going back and forth, there's not processing, there's not things creating noise or vibrations or any of those kinds of effects that we sometimes can see. And then F is that the proposed special land use shall comply with all applicable federal state multiple requirements that are copies of all permissions that will be submitted to the city, which would be addressed as a condition of approval if approved. And that's something that we would attach to pretty much everything. So those are the general standards for special land use approval. And then once the Commission takes a poll on those, we'll look briefly at the specific standards for commercial storage warehouses on page three.
Thank you, Andy. First, Commissioners, any questions at all? Only one I had was the E with the smoke, fumes, clutter, odors, any dangerous items stored and things of that nature. Give us a clue. Is there anything of that nature that's going to be stored?
There's not. I have two 700 gallon seal rigs. One's a 2019 and one's a 2022. So they're sealed, contained. I drive the Grand Rapids to get my materials, so I'm not going to have like a bulk tank where I would be drawing off that and putting it on the ground. I get my equipment or my material in Grand Rapids, apply it to churches, malls, roads, come back, park my seal rigs. So.
Okay. Any cleaning, like diesel to clean the?
No, no. It's, it's latex water base, so everything cleans out very easily.
Commissioners, any other questions at all? Then I would entertain a motion to accept the special land use, land use review standards, A through F. Such a motion?
I can make a motion for that.
And a second?
I'll support.
And any further discussion? Sue, roll call please.
Commissioner Kay Wilder.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes, thank you. Next, we'll do the commercial storage warehouse special land use standards. And that goes one through four. Andy, you want to go through those again?
Yes, thank you. So within the zoning ordinance, we just went through the general standards that apply to every special land use. And then there are also specific standards that apply to specific uses. So in this case, we have four standards here for commercial storage warehouses. One of them is that the lot be at least one acre an area, which is satisfied, this is a three acre lot. Number two discusses residence for an onsite operator, which does not apply here. Three for parking and circulation, talks about how many parking spaces to provide. This is a standard that's primarily written for indoor like self-storage type facilities. That's not an issue here. There is adequate parking on the site if they needed to park outside. And again, based on what we've heard from the applicant, what the application says, this is all going to be contained inside anyway, so there's not going to be, you know, a lot of parking concern on the outside of the building. And then four, ten foot line buffer strip along the side of the road line shall be provided. One thing that, that we note here is that, so this is a site that does not, it has frontage on Bowes Road, but they're not taking access from Bowes Road, they're taking access through the Joeyology, that's what it is. Through, through, through the Joeyology at 1250 West Main. There is legal access there from, from Main Street, and we would prefer that they use the Main Street access instead of driving like on the, basically two-track, you know, by the.
More important than on Bowes Road.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, to me, it makes sense to keep that traffic on Bowes Road to have the agreement with Joeyology to get, you know, to have access to this property through theirs. So we would actually suggest a condition of approval that would require them to not use Bowes Road at all for an access. I don't know why they would, it wouldn't be helpful to them anyways. Closer, I think, to Main Street than they are to Bowes Road, and it's way more convenient.
And does that, Bowes Road access, is that used for the baseball field?
I don't know, I mean, maybe. I honestly don't know what it's used for. It's not like a formal.
No, it's kind of just like around everything.
Yeah, so I think it's been more just informally used over the years. And it's just something where, again, I'm not concerned about the applicant using it. But their lease agreement makes reference to access across 1250 from Main Street, so I'd like to, I guess, memorialize that in the motion here so that we know that that's what the access is going to be.
I'm just wondering if we want to be able to keep that Bowes Road access open for your baseball field?
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't, so.
I don't know if we have a right to close it, I guess, is the order.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we need to close it. I just, for the purposes of the storage business in this property, they need to use this, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, so we can, we can put that in the conditions.
Correct, yep.
And that's okay with you, I assume?
So what you're saying is, so there, there is a two-track, there's a gate, and I think what that was primarily used for was back when Tom and Chevrolet was there. I remember them, you know, coming back from, you know, place to place. So what you're saying is you would close that off and there would be non-use to Bowes Road, just, just to clarify?
For the purposes of your storage business, we wouldn't want other access to come from Main Street.
Okay, what if like I in my personal truck coming down Bowes Road and want to cut up through the back into the shop, is that acceptable?
I, I think it would be, I would, it's up to you.
Yeah, just the equipment trucks going back and forth all the time.
Yeah, exactly.
I understand that. So, so we would call it limited access, is that?
Yeah, so we're, we can get into that in a minute, specify what type of vehicle could.
Right.
Would be restricted.
And I, I don't know that we want to restrict that access necessarily. So if we can come up with a wording to ensure that only, you know, the trucks only use Main Street, for obvious reasons.
Yeah, heavy equipment.
Yeah, heavy equipment. It's on Main Road instead of on a residential type road.
Two-track.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I don't think I like, I mean, it's actually deemed heavy equipment. I mean, I'm not a paving company, I'm a maintenance company.
Right.
And usually when we associate the two, the paving company has, you know, big tenure dump trucks and pavers and stuff. My night business and company isn't like that.
Right.
And then one more thing I'd like to bring up if I could is, like, I'm going to be storing a lot of stuff inside, but, you know, not all my stuff's going to fit inside that building, so there is going to be a couple of trucks, you know, maybe a seal rig outside, but there is plenty of parking back there too.
There is. And did you recently pave it?
I sealed it.
Sealed it?
I went down and cleaned the place up.
Yeah.
I mean, there was weeds, fourth and tall.
Now, I noticed it.
Yeah.
I noticed it yesterday, actually, yeah. Looked a lot better than what it did yesterday.
Yeah, brushed up and, you know, been power washed and just trying to keep the place, you know, get it back up to snuff, and that's the way I'll keep it.
Andy, are you done with your work remarks? I would entertain a motion then to accept the commercial storage warehouse special land use standards with the one condition of using the trucks only on Main Street. Do I have somebody that'll make that motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Okay, do we have a second for that?
I'll support.
Okay. And discussion?
You do have the documents that you're sharing that with Joeyology, the access to Main Road, is that?
That's an easy one, isn't it, Andy, going back there?
Yeah, so that's actually, that's also addressed in their lease agreement, that they provide us a copy of that, it specifically grants that access.
Okay, nice.
I'll make sure you're covered. Yeah, you can't get to it.
No further discussion? Sue, voice vote please.
Commissioner Kay Wilder.
Yeah.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
Chair Barker.
Yes. At this point, I'd like to close the public hearing. And I'd like to make the motion then that we accept ProSeal Storage, 1251 Bowes Road, there's special land use and special commercial storage warehouse special land use with the following nine conditions now?
So we have eight, so let's talk about those real quick. So I'm not proposing to change any of the first five. Condition six states no outdoor storage shall be permitted, so just so there's no confusion about parking, we could say with the exception of vehicle parking, no outdoor storage is permitted. Number seven, we could say something like equipments related to the business aside from typical personal, let's see, actually. So I'm thinking about the access one. So originally I wrote access of the property shall be from Main Street through 1250 West Main as specified in the lease agreement. No access shall be taken from Bowes Road. So we could make an exception there, when we're talking about, you know, basically anything other than passenger vehicles can't use.
Personal vehicle or something?
Pretty personal.
Yeah. And in the first part of it there, if we simply say the trucks.
Right? So if we say aside from personal vehicles.
Can't you just say ProSeal equipment? Access through 1250 Main, it's just the equivalent.
Right.
So that keeps it simple, you know?
Yeah, or you can say something like, you know, any trailer up to a truck not permitted. Does that make sense? A lot of times I'm dealing with trailers, so.
Trailer makes it happen, so, yeah.
So you could say something like ProSeal equipment and trailers shall only access the property from Main Street.
Right, that's good.
That's not good? Yeah. So only access the property from Main Street through 1250 West Main as specified in lease agreement, no other access shall be taken from Bowes Road. And then the eighth condition is that the special land use shall become null and void upon the expiration or termination of the lease agreement. So if they move out, if they move in a couple of years or something like that, then the special land use could go away. But so far as they are here and starting the business and using it in a manner that's consistent with the ordinance, then the special land use would continue on.
Right, just in case ProSeal gets big enough to take over the Mid East building?
Yeah, maybe, yeah, they could move in. And get a larger space and continue to grow in Lowell.
I mean, eventually my son and another young man are going to take over the business and potentially they'll refine that, you know, with help through us. So we're, our, our long-term goal is to stay there.
Good. Again, I'll make that motion that we approve the ProSeal Storage, 1251 Bowes Road, special land use, and commercial storage warehouse special land use with the following eight conditions.
Okay, yes.
Is there a second?
Second?
Discussion. Sue?
Commissioner Kay Wilder.
Yes.
Commissioner Ellis.
Yes.
Commissioner Kadula.
Yes.
Commissioner Plank.
Yes.
Commissioner Schramman.
Yes.
And Chair Barker.
Yes, welcome to Lowell. Nice to have you.
Is this a, is this a year-to-year thing or is it, this is one time and it's?
Well, you will vote.
Is there fees per year?
No.
No? Yeah, so easy.
Well, that being said, so if you change something, so if you expand the building, if you started with something that's outside of what you have proposed to do, then that could trigger an amendment, that could back here. And otherwise, you know, if you, if you use the building for the purposes outlined in your application, that would just go on, no changes or no return credits of money.
Okay. I do have a 10 by 30 storage unit, you know, the big, with a lock on it. Very clean, painted all up nice, am I allowed to put that down there?
I'll check.
Okay. Because there's a, there's a place between the building and the east that would just slide right ahead, it actually would be out of sight.
I don't know off the top of my head, I'll take a look.
If you want to make an annual donation to the Bruce Parker Retirement.
You certainly will, isn't it?
I thought you were going to say see him.
Doing it during Christmas.
Put this during Christmas, Andy. Should have thirty-five. Did you get that date? I also wanted to say that Sue really helped me through that whole process, so I really appreciate what you did for me.
Thank you.
I've never really done them like this before, but you made it really easy to step me through the process and I really appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good, that's nice to hear. She helps all of us.
Yeah, earning the people's run.
So do I, do I need like a piece of paper or anything? I mean, I'm all set at this point.
You'll get a piece of paper.
Yeah, okay, I'll get you one, it'll take a few days. And then about an hour, we're all set. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
Have a great evening. Thank you.
Thanks, goodbye.
Nice, kind words. Staff report, Sue?
I have nothing further.
Andy?
Um.
Anything upcoming?
I think we go. Yeah, we've updated on, the union continues to work on their, getting their parking situation. Yep, so they've been working on getting that together. They submitted a plan which should generally work, we're just working on getting the drainage figured out with them. Should be moving forward. We had a question about noise at the, the Grand Rapids Gavel Pad, which Mike and I have been working on, not sure where that's at, but otherwise, I'm not sure of anything coming up for next month, I'm just tapping on my head.
I've been, I've been taking walks over the park over there, the noise seemed to be relatively decent.
Yeah, and part of it too is just how the land lies, so depending on where you are in relation to the site, noise carries differently. And once they did down.
Once they get down deep.
They'll, they'll get better.
They're still up high.
Yeah, so once they get lower, it'll get better.
They'll build some big berms up.
Yeah, yeah, they're a little better. Good, good. Anything else? Master plan?
So we should, so I think we're, yeah, so we're due for a five-year review of the master plan. So a five-year review of the plan means that you review it and determine whether or not it needs to be updated. If you do, then, you know, we can, we'd have to talk about budgeting for that process and in the, in the scope of the amendment, because the master, you can do a very quick and simple master plan amendment or update. And this, if you were to, I think yours, it's still pretty well put together, but there are definitely some portions of it that I would change, like on the future land use, that's in some of those areas, I think it's, probably needs some amendment. But we'd also have to, you know, you would have to see where council is with, with their budget and what kind of works, what you'd be looking for to get that done, because master plans can be done fairly economically, but you can also, you know, spend some money and do a really thorough, you know, detailed, in-depth job.
Last time it was up there was 2007, I think.
Yes.
So it's probably time to take a serious look at that.
Yeah, so we can.
Well, it just updated us then in October and we'll kind of go from there and schedule it probably, you know, in the first year or whenever the city council agrees.
Exactly.
Give us a couple of months to table it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Candy?
Commissioner Mark Twain.
Oh, good.
Dave?
I want to put in a word for some more boat docks that I brought up here a couple of years ago. Down behind the showboat, you put like four little slips in for onto Main Street.
Ooh.
Yeah, gotta work on that.
Who do we bring that to?
I don't care. City.
Let's put that on our agenda and then we can offer it to the city.
Um, we do that.
What about Eagle?
Well, yeah, so that might be a council discussion, I don't, so Eagle, if they're permitted, peers, an Eagle would require a permit for sure.
Oh, boat docks.
I don't know.
Not like bugs over Lake Odessa.
No, yeah, even, even if we just simply bring it up and pass it on to the council, at least it puts it on their radar.
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah. Yeah, I do.
Just let's go to the town, let's take the boat. Yeah.
Yeah.
And maybe a little.
Yeah, yelling, getting too close to the showboat.
It's a good look to take a look at. Tom?
Comments?
Boom.
I think two things. Anything progressive, Mike isn't here, I see, but with cleaning or making the river access more accessible to boats. I mean, it's just getting fuller and fuller and more vegetation, I mean, seems like it's our livelihood in the city of Lowell to have that area for boats and stuff. I mean, nobody drives a pontoon up for Thursday nights anymore because they can't get around. I mean.
There's one lane.
Yeah.
Don't seem like what they need, I think.
We should be able to do something. Spray or something.
Many years ago in my former life, there, I ran across a council or something that they actually gave up grants and it was a water trail and water towns and stuff like that, and that's what they, they worked on. And it could be, you know, it could be your docks, it could be cleaning, stuff like that, and they would give out grants and stuff like that. It was at, at a state level. I think they were located down in Jackson, I'm not that sure of that. But that might be something that we can explore and see if we can get some answers to it. Because it's to the benefit of, you know, the entire city, the area, everyone.
We got condos going in now, we got condos going in now and it's a natural progression of a dam as the sediment builds up before, you know, and it's like, you gotta upkeep, otherwise you're going to lose it. Second thing is, I just got hired on for fire department, which is good. And they complimented the city of Lowell for their fire hydrants being named and the upkeep, you know, it's like, you know, their township surrounding, they don't have a plan and many of them, they don't even know where fire hydrants are, so it's.
Wait, they find one?
But they, they complimented the city in this meeting, saying the city really has it together. Just want to pass that on.
Great. Man? And I got none. I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll have a motion today.
Support?
Close the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So the public hearing.
Oh, yes, I did, I did. Thank you, thank you. No, thank you for reminding me. Can't have those lists read. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Will you stand adjourned?